I'm Steve Smith, and I'd like to call this our board meeting to order. And we're going to start off, as we always do, with retired Lieutenant General Keith Huber leading us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another tradition we have that I think we're all proud of is we recognize an outstanding veteran at each meeting, and General Huber, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, President McPhee. Ladies and gentlemen, my privilege at this time to introduce to you Army Staff Sergeant Lisa Kisp. She entered the Army in 1995 and selected one of our most dangerous hazardous special operations duties in the armed forces, and for seven years she was a technician of explosive ordinance disposal. In this skill set, why, there is no training practice, whether it's in training or it's operational. Your approach is life-threatening, so you want to talk about attention to detail, meticulous attention to detail, stress under timing, and being able to defuse bombs which are there to destroy and maim human beings. After she left active duty, she remained as a contractor in bomb disposal and served in Iraq and Guam and Puerto Rico diffusing bombs and clearing the way for our most senior elected officials and military representatives. I shared with her that my first letter of reprimand as an energetic First Lieutenant Green Beret in the Republic of Panama was for diffusing a bomb on a church. And the Colonel who wrote my letter of reprimand said that I blatantly disregarded the fact that I was not properly trained to defuse this bomb and, as a result, put government property at greater risk of destruction, me being the government property. Lisa then decided that she wanted to directly impact veterans that were in crisis, and she spent two years completely focused on resolving the veterans homelessness situation and to prevent homelessness, working for the nonprofit Operation Stand Down. For the last seven years, she has served and will continue to serve as a Davidson County Veteran Service Officer, filling a gap that had been left blank by the Davidson County for over 40 years. And so she directly impacts veterans' lives and makes them better every day. She received her Associate's Degree from Austin Peay State University and is completing her Bachelor's Degree here at Middle Tennessee State University. In fact, in March, Dr. Miller and I had the privilege of listening and learning to Lisa in our class that we teach, the intensive building and leading teams. Ladies and gentlemen, Lisa Kisp.
I appreciate that. So I know for some COVID has not been the best situation, but improvise, adapt, and overcome, COVID has afforded me the opportunity to finally complete an education goal that has been stewing, I guess, for years. In the military, we were bounced from post to post, and on just about every post, I took a course or two in their education or the school that's on the post for the convenience of the soldiers. So as a result, I had a transcript that was a bit of a mess and never got anywhere near finishing a degree, but always had to write some college courses taken on my resume, which seemed a little unfinished to me, and I really wanted to change that scenario. In 2020, when I was sent home to work remotely, it freed me up with a lot of extra time on my hands. I no longer had about a 10-hour-a-week commute. I didn't have to bother getting up, getting dressed. I rolled out of bed and worked in my pajamas. And so I had a lot of extra time, and so I figured now is, there's no time like the present, let's get it finished. So I ended up finishing with Austin Peay, whom I had taken courses before, and then I started realizing COVID's going to eventually resolve itself. We're going to get vaccines, or we're going to get something, and we're going to end up, I'm going to have to go back to work. Commuting from my home in Smyrna to Clarksville, where Austin Peay is located, is clearly not a good option. So I started looking around for other schools that were closer to me that could afford me the opportunity to progress my associates to a bachelor's, and Middle Tennessee definitely sticks out. Middle Tennessee not only is an excellent school in general, it's very close to my home, but you guys have cultivated a reputation of being very veteran-friendly, also obviously being an excellent school academically. And so it was not a great, huge decision to make, a stressful decision to make, to finish my degree at Middle Tennessee. I was privileged to take the course with General Huber and Dr. Miller. It was very interesting, a lot of soul-searching. It was not exactly what I was expecting, but it was an excellent course. And I continue, again, I'm actually currently in a course today, or this semester, and I anticipate completing my bachelor's May of 2022. Thank you very much for the opportunity to realize this goal finally, although it's taken me forever. And I appreciate you having me speak today. Thank you very much.
Welcome to our board meeting, and I'm going to take a little bit of chairman's prerogative, not going to steal all your thunder, but just part of it. We're extremely pleased to have the Commissioner of Health, Dr. Lisa Piercy, with us today. She has lots of accomplishments. I mean, she worked for a company that had 7,000 employees, but she happens to be a pediatrician and a mother of four, and she happens to be the reason that MTSU was able to open successfully and fruitfully, because without her personally, we would not have been able to carry on the mission of our school last fall. So we're indebted to you, Dr. Commissioner, Lisa, and thank you for taking the time to visit our campus. And I know you've been with Dr. McPhee this morning, and this is us. And we first met a time or two, but one of the most innovative, we went to a White House education study where Lisa participated in the discussion, but lots of good information. So thank you for being here. I know Dr. McPhee has a few words, and then we'd like to give you the microphone if you have any words that you'd like to have, but Dr. McPhee, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I got to know the Commissioner very well this past year, this past year and a half, and I will tell you that much of the decisions that we made at this university was made after consultation with Commissioner Piercy. I think she has regretted giving me her cellphone number, but every time I would call her, she would be very much willing and gracious in responding to any questions or concerns. So I asked her to come and visit our campus, took on a brief tour earlier today. Her mother actually went to MTSU, and she has four kids, and we are recruiting them now to come to this great institution. But I appreciate all the advice and your friendship, Commissioner. Thank you so much for what you do for the state of Tennessee.
Thank you, Dr. McPhee, Chairman Smith. It is an enormous honor to be in front of you today, and I learned so much on my tour this morning. So Kim drove us around, and we saw lots of things. I learned new words like mechatronics, and it's a beautiful campus, and I'm glad to be here. But I want you to know how special of a team that you have, because when we were going through this, and in case you forgot, we never did anything like this before. There wasn't a manual, and therefore there wasn't a clear right answer to hardly anything, quite frankly. So it even became more important to have partners when we were managing this crisis together. And not only was this kind of a work thing for me, my oldest had just started, or was about to start, her first year as a residential college student in a private institution in Nashville, where I'm an alum. And so this was not just a work thing. This was not just advice. This was, what decisions are we making here, and what precedent are we setting that's going to affect my own child? And am I comfortable with that? And so that really helped put a face to it. And so when we worked together, not only with Dr. McPhee, but your student health staff and your clinical staff, is amazing. They are innovative, they are forward-thinking, and they're great collaborative partners that you probably don't even, not even aware. They helped us with our own Rutherford County Health Department, and a lot of the flow and issues we were just having as a routine health department, you guys were awesome partners to step up to do that. And so Dr. McPhee and I talked several times, and I told him just a week or two ago, I said, I do always take your calls when you call, because that sort of implies I don't always take everybody else's calls. Maybe we shouldn't say that. But I always take Dr. McPhee's calls, because I always know it's going to be about getting to the best outcome. You know the calls. Sometimes they're charged or have an agenda even before they start, but not his. It was always about getting to the best outcome. And so I learned that pretty quickly on, in the pandemic, and then we went to this event, I think it was right at the 1st of July last year, on school reopening at the White House. And I knew there was going to be a higher education institution from Tennessee represented, but you know, they tend to be kind of mum about these things, so I wasn't sure who it was, or I was incredibly pleasantly surprised when I saw Dr. McPhee. And then I saw a young lady named Delaney with him, and when she spoke, I thought, my goodness, she is an impressive lady. She must have prepared for weeks for this. I just learned a few minutes ago, she had about five or six days on the job before she did that, and so you should be extra proud of her. She represented you beautifully in a pretty high-profile setting and did such a great job. So thank you for what you're doing. You guys not only have been an example for the state, we in Tennessee, and particularly MTSU, has been an example for the nation of how we can stay in school, we can even build our enrollment and stay healthy while we're doing it. So thank you for everything.
She got an excuse passed to leave early. So, well, President, do you have some remarks?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Oh, good.
Yes, my assistant has reminded me that that's why Kim Edgar runs the university. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do have sad news to report regarding one of our distinguished professors. This past Wednesday, June 2nd, Dr. Tibor Koreczanski, professor in the Department of Chemistry, he passed away suddenly after being involved in a multi-vehicle crash on Lebanon Pike. He was an internationally known and recognized expert in computational chemistry and X-ray based structural analysis and molecular crystals. He was really admired and loved by his students and faculty alike for his outstanding intellect, his quiet wisdom, and his dry wit, and of course, his kind heart. Let's keep him and his family in our prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Secretary Mr. Farrar to call a roll.
Trustee Baker.
Present.
Trustee Boyd.
Present.
Trustee Delay.
Present.
Vice Chairman Freeman.
Present.
Trustee Jacobs.
Present.
Trustee Martin.
Present.
Trustee Kerbalik.
Present.
Chairman Smith.
Present.
Trustee Wright.
Present.
Trustee McDonald.
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you, sir. Next is approval of the minutes of the April 6 regular session board meeting on Tab 1. If there are any changes or additions, subtractions, now's the time. If not, I'd like to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Now's the time for committee report on action items, where Academic Affairs, Student Life, Athletics, under Tab 2. Trustee Wright.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Academic Affairs, Student Life, and Athletics Committee met on May 25, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its March 16, 2021 meeting. Today, I would like to present two action items for the board's consideration. The first item, considered by the committee, was tenure and promotion candidates presented by Provost Mark Burns. Faculty members applied for tenure and are promotion in September 2020 and have been reviewed by their department chair, school director, department school committee, college committee, college dean, provost, and president, as stipulated by MTSU Policies 204 Tenure, 205 Promotion of Tenured and Tenurable Faculty, and their respective college and department policies. The president and university provost recommend they be granted tenure and/or promotion effective August 1, 2021. This committee unanimously approved 22 candidates recommended for tenure and 38 candidates recommended for promotion. I'm pleased to report that this action was approved unanimously by the committee. The meeting concluded with a motion by Trustee Delay. The motion was for our board to make our number-one priority consistent with the strategic plan, Quest 2025, of increasing the graduation rate by the entire university by 6% over the next five years. This committee unanimously approved and endorsed this proposal. Finally, several informational items presented to the committee included an update on application and enrollment activity, an update on athletics, a presentation on diversity, student success initiatives, and closing the achievement gap, and a presentation on the impact of non-returning student and financial implications. So, Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining the committee actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting, they're contained in your board notebooks, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
We better finish the vote.
Okay. I thought we did.
Well, motion carried.
Yes, when we had the conversation about the people made for tenure, I had a question about the diversity of the folks who were in that group, and Dr. Burns did respond back to me this past Friday and let me know that there were no African-Americans in that group of folks to be tenured. Not the best of news, but I hope that in the future that we can get some additional diversity in the folks who come before us for tenure. And based on the work that I've done in the national community and around the country, I am willing to get in and roll my sleeves up and help this university go out and find qualified diversity candidates to come to this university. So I'm all in, 110%, but I would like to see, as we approve tenure, that we have some diverse candidates in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Audit and Compliance Committee. Dr. Delay.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Audit and Compliance Committee met on May 25, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its March 16, 2021 meeting. Three action items were presented to the committee. First on the agenda was the request for the approval of policy revisions. Ms. Kristi Sigler, Interim Assistant to the President for Institutional Equity and Compliance, presented Policy 25: Equal Opportunity, Affirmative Action, and Non-Discrimination. The proposed revisions were drafted to reflect the adoption of MTSU Policy 29 Title IX Compliance and to update job titles and terminology. The next two action items before the committee were presented by Brenda Burkhardt, Chief Audit Executive. First was the request for review and approval of the Audit and Compliance Committee's charter. Tennessee Code Annotated Title IV, Chapter 35, requires state governing boards that are responsible for the preparation of financial statements to have an audit committee, and the audit committee must have a charter that is approved by the Comptroller of the Treasury. The MTSU Audit and Compliance Committee Charter in Section 4G1 requires a review of the charter every four years or as needed to assess the adequacy of the charter. Any proposed changes need to be approved by the board and the Comptroller of the Treasury. The current charter is dated September 12, 2017, and is included in the meeting materials. The charter has been reviewed for compliance with state law and the Comptroller of the Treasury's guidelines for audit committee charters. There are no proposed revisions to the current Audit and Compliance Committee charter other than to update the signatures to the current chair of the committee. Next was the request for review and approval of the Audit Charter for the Audit Office. Tennessee Code Annotated 4-3-304 requires the internal audit staffs of state entities to follow the international standards of professional practice of internal auditing, published by the Institute of Internal Auditors. The standards require an internal audit charter for the internal audit function, which formally defines the purpose, authority, and responsibility of the internal audit activity. The Chief Audit Executive must periodically review and the internal audit charter and present it to senior management and the board for approval. The Audit Charter presented for approval is the same charter approved in May 2017, when MTSU's governance changed to the Board of Trustees. The charter has been reviewed for compliance with state law, MTSU Policy 70 internal audit, and internal auditing standards with no proposed revisions except to update the signatures to include the current chair of the Audit and Compliance Committee. I'm pleased to report that all action items were approved unanimously by the committee. Informational items were presented to the committee, included a report on independence of Chief Audit Executive and a quarterly report of results of internal audit reports. The public meeting of the committee adjourned, and the committee went into executive session to discuss audits and investigations. Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining these actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next is Vice Chairman Freeman with the committee report for Executive and Governance Committee.
Let me find that, Mr. Chairman.
Page 10.
The Executive and Governance Committee met on May 25, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its March 16, 2021 meeting. Two action items were brought before the committee. First, the request for a proposed policy revision to the Board of Trustees' policy regarding board committees was presented by Dr. Mary Hoff Swelley, Associate Provost, Strategic Planning and Partnerships. The Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges required that a governing board defines and regularly evaluates its responsibilities and expectations, standard 4.2.G board self-evaluation. The university's compliance certification report for reaffirmation of accreditation must explain how the MTSU Board of Trustees meets the requirement, supported by evidence such as board policies and procedures, minutes of meetings, schedules of self-evaluation, and reports on findings from those evaluations. The proposed change will clarify the Executive and Governance Committee's responsibility for a regular schedule of board self-evaluation and use of evaluation results for improvement. The committee members unanimously approved this policy revision. The second item, the second action item, was consideration of a proposed new Board of Trustees' policy, request to address Board of Trustees presented by Jeff Farrar, Acting Board Secretary. Board Bylaw Section 8.D4 permits anyone wishing to address the board to submit a written request to do so at at least seven days prior to the scheduled board meeting. At the April 6, 2021 Board of Trustees' meeting, several trustees expressed that the board needed procedures for considering and fulfilling these requests. Proposed Board Policy Request to Address the Board of Trustees sets forth procedures for such requests, including a procedure for making such requests, a listing of permissible subjects, time allocation for speakers, and other matters. The committee members unanimously approved this new policy. Finally, one informational item, general parliamentary rules, was presented by the Acting Board Secretary. Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining this action were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Thank you, Pete, for giving this, turning this over to me. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Jeff looked like he had something he wanted to say, but under page 12, third paragraph. I thought it was seven days prior, along with written materials proposed to be distributed at that time.
The policy draft that was approved was you submit your request seven days prior to the board meeting, and in the policy is that you include any written materials you want to present as well. That's written in the policy.
So my memory wasn't totally off. Good. Since I'm on committee, I'll make a motion to approve these. Do I have, since I'm on committee, I'll make a motion to approve these.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Trustee Jacobs, Finance and Personnel Committee, which you have total control of, is your report.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. Is the green tab in your board book, the information starts on page 85 in your board book. You want to follow through those pages. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on May 25, 2021. The committee approved the minutes from its March 16, 2021 meeting. There were six action items presented for consideration. The first action item before the committee was the recommendation for the permanent appointment of the University of Counsel and Secretary to the Board, presented by President McPhee. Policy 808 Compensation Reporting and Approvals requires the appointment and salary recommendation of vice presidents or other executives reporting directly to the president be approved by the Board of Trustees. President McPhee requested approval to appoint Mr. James Floyd as University Counsel, as well as seeking the approval of the salary requested. The committee unanimously approved this new appointment. I would now like to take a moment and let Dr. McPhee introduce Mr. Floyd to us.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Jacobs, and it certainly is my pleasure to introduce to the board and members of the audience, Mr. James Floyd, our new General Counsel. You all had his resume that we sent and considered during the committee meeting. He is an excellent attorney and tremendous experience in many areas. He's here with us today. And, Mr. Floyd, I'd like for you to stand and make any comments that you'd like to make.
Mr. Floyd, please come to the podium. Yes, please. Now, you only have one minute, so, but you do get to use the podium. Glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to have this opportunity to be University Counsel and Board Secretary. I guess let me first start off, and I'll, I'll be quick. Let me first start off by thanking the campus community members who participated in the selection process and who considered me for this position. The reason I want to start there is I was able to get a sense of the current priorities here at the university and the role that the University Counsel plays in helping you meet those priorities. Also, I want to thank Dr. McPhee for selecting me and for recommending me to the board. And in turn, I want to thank the board for our opportunity to, to be before you today. I see my responsibility as University Counsel and Board Secretary to support your vision for MTSU as it faces the challenges of the future. Last thing I'll just mention, we're all still working within this pandemic. This is sort of an unprecedented and really pivotable, pivotable time for the university, but it's also an opportunity for growth and innovation. I see the University Counsel as being essential to supporting the university in its efforts. So the last thing I'll say is thank you again, and it's nice to be true blue again. So thank you.
Before I begin my comments, I would like to thank Jeff. Thank you for being the Acting General Counsel during this period of time, and you done, did a great job. You handled Chairman Smith very well.
Thank you.
So, but we really do appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Chairman Jacobs, may I also add the thanks to Jeff on behalf of the executive group? You stepped in without missing a beat, and you are a representative of the outstanding faculty and staff that we have at this university, and I look forward to continue working with you and having you provide the kind of advice and support that helped this university be what it is today. So thank you so much personally. I really appreciate you stepping in that role. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next action item was a request for approval of capital disclosures presented by Bill Waits, Assistant Vice President for Campus Planning. In accordance with THEC Policy 4.0.6(c) concerning disclosure of projects funded through bonds, gifts, grants, or local funds, MTSU plans to submit one project, the Campus Quadrangle Improvements, as part of the fiscal year 2022/2023 year MTSU capital budget request. This disclosure is to replace the Campus Quadrangle site improvements that is currently disclosed but will expire July 2022. On May 14, MTSU disclosed another project, the College Heights renovation project to THEC via quarterly disclosure to be included in the fiscal year 2122 MTSU disclosure list. This proposed project will serve the university police department by renovating space to accommodate a police training simulator and provide office space for emergency management and police personnel. This committee unanimously approved the capital disclosures as presented. The third action item was a request for approval of capital maintenance projects submitted, presented by Joe Whitefield, Assistant Vice President for Facility Services. These requests included capital maintenance requests for aid projects for fiscal year 2022-23 totaling $11,798,000 and a summary of capital maintenance potential project requests for five years fiscal year 2022-23 through fiscal year 2026-27. The committee unanimously approved this capital maintenance project submitted. The fourth agenda was a request for approval of proposed tuition, fees, and housing rates presented by Alan Thomas, Vice President for Business and Finance. Under the Focus Act, the Tennessee Higher Education now sets a binding range in which institutions can increase undergraduate in-state tuition, as well as a binding range for the combined undergraduate in-state tuition plus mandatory fees. For 21-22, THEC approved both of these ranges at 0% to 2% at its May 2021 commission meeting. The university is proposing a 1.99% increase in tuition for all students, which complies with THEC's binding range of 0% to 2%. The total impact of the combined increase in undergraduate tuition and mandatory, mandatory fees is a 1.78% increase on students taking 15 hours, which complies with THEC's total guidance of 0% to 2%. The university is recommending an additional 3% increase in graduate tuition. In addition to the tuition and mandatory fees, materials were also provided for non-mandatory fee requests, as well as housing rates. Non-mandatory fees and housing rates are only subject to the approval by the MTSU Board of Trustees. The committee unanimously approved the staff's recommendation for tuition, fees, and housing rates as presented. I would also like to inform you that by Tennessee law, we are required to give public notice of proposed increases to tuition and mandatory fees charged to in-state undergraduate students at least 15 days prior to the holding of a public meeting to adopt the increases. You will find that in Tennessee Code Annotated 49-7-1603. A very easy and visible link from the Board of Trustees' homepage was made effective on May 21 for individuals to provide comments during the 15-day period regarding tuition and fee increase proposals. The public comment period ran from May 21 through June 5 at 4:30 PM Central Daylight Time. All public comments received have been collected and included in your books. We appreciate the perspectives provided in the comments and have given careful consideration to the impact that any increase will have on student affordability. In evaluating the proposal, the Finance Committee reviewed materials containing the tuition rates of other Tennessee public institutions, as well as peer institutions, and found that even with the proposed fee increase, MTSU ranked as a very affordable in comparison. The next item before the committee was a request for approval of compensation presented by Kathy Muselman, Assistant Vice President for Human Resources. The governor's budget provided 1.1 million in nonrecurring funding for the creation of a 2% salary pool covering the period from January 1, 2021 through June 30, 2021. The recommendation to the board included a one-time bonus equivalent to six months of a 2% salary increase or $500, whichever is greater for regular employees, both full and part time on the payroll as of December 31, 2020. The bonuses will be calculated based on the annual salary as of May 31, 2021 and paid in June 2021 payroll. The guidelines implementing the increase were also presented. The governor's budget also provided 4.5 million in recurring funding, and a recommendation for a recurring salary pool will be presented by the university at the August 2021 meeting. The committee unanimously approved this compensation plan as presented. The last action item before the committee was operating budgets, presented by Vice President Thomas. The estimated budget is the final budget for any given fiscal year and allows the university to reflect any adjustments needed for spring enrollment, additional funding provided through state appropriations, and other miscellaneous adjustments. The July budget is the base budget for the upcoming fiscal year. It is based on a 1.5% tuition increase and includes mandatory fee increases, salary and operating appropriation increases approved by the General Assembly for 2021-22, and a stable enrollment. Vice President Thomas presented in detail both the 2020-21 estimated budget and the 2021-22 proposed budget. Both budgets were unanimously approved by the committee. One informational item before the committee included an overview of the capital outlay projects requirement provided by THEC this year. Mr. Chairman and trustees, as stated earlier, I'm pleased to report that all action items were approved unanimously by the committee. Materials outlining these actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board books. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
You need some oxygen?
Yes, we work twice as hard as others. Thank you, Alan, for all the work.
So, you need a motion?
We need a motion to approve the action and of the Personnel and Finance Committee?
So moved.
It's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next.
Chairman Smith, could I make a quick comment on the tuition and fees?
Please.
Oh, thank you. I believe we didn't receive these until after our committee meeting, the comments. So I was reading over them, and I just had a few, just comments that I wanted to make from a student perspective that hopefully will help the board in the future. And as I read through them, I believe MTSU may not have done a good job of explaining what the purpose of the tuition increase was. I saw a lot of comments of students thinking that this was going straight into certain administrators' salary or into sports, things like that. And so I just think it's really important that students should know that this is not just an increase just for the university to be making money, that it's really a trade-off because MTSU either brings in the money to cover these things or they're going to have to cut resources that students use. And I think that that just might not have been explained very well to the students. So I would recommend in the future, if there are way to give a line item explanation of exactly where this money is going so students are not confused. I also saw some students talking about that their salary had, or their tuition had been the exact same for several years, so they didn't understand why we are raising it now. And that's another thing that maybe they just weren't informed about, that this is an annual increase that happens. And I'm lucky that I've worked with administration for so long that I'm more aware of these issues than the average student. But I do think it should be out in the open, very easily accessible for students to understand exactly why there's a need to increase tuition and fees every year. Even some staff members were unaware of how much the increase was or what it was going to. So I would just recommend in the future, if possible, to make that a little more transparent to students, because I saw a lot of confusion in the comments that it was a little vague and they didn't understand where it was going, or they assumed it was going directly to certain administrators' salaries. So I'd like to make that recommendation for the board to consider in the future.
Excellent point. Thank you. Next, ladies and gentlemen, it's with mixed emotions today that we recognize Delaney McDonald for her service as the fourth middle student trustee. Delaney's done a remarkable job representing the students, as just evidenced, over the past 12 months. She's dedicated herself to our school and her career. We'll miss her passion and hard work in improving the student experience, and we do wish you the very best. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Piercey said, too. She had about three minutes' notice that the next morning she was going to be speaking to the country. And I had enough confidence, the president had enough confidence, I didn't give her any tips on what to say. And we did not review her speech, and it was perfect. So I appreciate your, your willingness to jump in and get after it and your passion for this. We have a small token. This is a stand to hold this. Come on up and get it. Pretty neat medallion. If you have it in your pocket, you jump over, boy, you'll see it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Nice medallion.
Real nice.
Me and you didn't do that. Somebody smarter than us got that one. This brings us to the next item, and that is our faculty trustee. I'm sorry?
Mr. Student.
I'm sorry.
Go back to the book.
Yes. Brings us next item business, which is appointment of the new student represented, as noted in Article 45 of the bylaws. So one-year appointment. This time I call on President McPhee to introduce us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. First, let me also add my thanks to Trustee McDonald, who clearly represent the students, and your comments were really on target. In fact, when I read a number of the comments, it's, it's like when you hear citizens' response to raising taxes. Everybody want quality programs, they want better service, but if they don't know exactly what's happening, how those monies are used, you get comments like that. So we definitely will take your recommendation under consideration and implement it. Well done. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with you this past year, and indeed, you made us all proud. I heard a lot of positive comments about your remarks at the White House. You are a student that, again, represent us exceptionally well, and best wishes to you. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give you a summary of the selection process for the student trustee. This process is managed by the Office of the Vice President for Student Affairs and the the Student Government Association. Applications were submitted to the Student Government Association office, and once applications were received, recipients were sent a confirmation email. The Student Government Association Executive Board reviewed the applications and selected applicants to be interviewed. Applicants were then notified that they had been selected for an interview, and after the interviews were conducted, three finalist applications were sent to the Office of the President. I personally interviewed and reviewed all the top three application, and now I have a recommendation for your consideration. Mr. Chairman, trustees, it is my honor to recommend Ms. Gabrielle James as our next student trustee. Gabrielle was a graduate of Central Magnet High School, where she participated in MTSU dual enrollment classes. She originally enrolled at the University of Louisiana Lafayette, but realized that a better university was around, MTSU, and she transferred to MTSU in 2019. By the way, that was her comment, with the Transfer Promise Scholarship, one of the scholarships that we've developed over the years to attract the bright and the best transfer student in the state. Gabrielle is enrolled in our Communication Studies major. She has served as president of MTSU Communication Studies Club, has worked as a volunteer with the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation, and with Borderless Art Tennessee, which involves young people with disabilities in exploring the arts. She's a high-achieving student, excelling in the classroom, and will be a terrific representative of our student body in her work with the trustees. So we are excited, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, to introduce her, to you, and welcome her here today. Gabrielle, would you please stand and let us welcome you?
While we're doing the formalities, come on and sit at the front. I need a motion to approve Ms. James.
So moved.
Second.
And there's motion being made, second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. So, thank you. Do you have any comments?
I would just like to say a few thanks. I'm really honored to be here with you all today. I'm very excited about this opportunity to have an impact on the student community and by extension, the Murfreesboro community, because this university is such an important part of this city. And I want to thank Dr. McPhee for nominating me. I want to thank Ms. Pat Thomas for getting me started, and Dr. Salz for meeting with me and kind of giving me a little orientation. And I think I made my way around to everybody in this room, but if I did not, please come say hi to me afterwards. I'm very excited to connect with everybody, staff, board members, audience members, and I'm just very looking forward to bringing a new perspective onto this Board as a transfer student, as a first-generation college student, as a woman of color. So yeah, thank you.
Next is our faculty trustee transition. As this semester comes to an end, it's time for changes in our trustee membership. Today's the final meeting of our second faculty trustee member, Dr. Mary Martin. Dr. Martin has served as an outstanding representative of her peers, and we appreciate her engagement with the Board. Before I call on Dr. McPhee to introduce trustee, I'd like to ask Mary if you have a few words you'd like to say.
I do. Thank you very much, Chairman Smith. First and last, I would like to thank each of the trustee members for their cordiality and collegiality. That's made all the difference when it comes to accomplishing our tasks, especially in the time of COVID, and I very much value this friendship personally. I'm sure that you will welcome and work with our future trustee, who you will meet in a minute, in a similar fashion. The role of trustee is a challenge because the skills that you are required to display and use are magnified by the importance of the task. You are envisioning and enabling the future of MTSU as a Board. Over the past two years, you have collectively come to grips with the information, details, and rhythm of MTSU oversight. Going forward, this knowledge acts as a foundation that you can build on, which you will use to select the trajectory of the university and to lead with discernment. So I'd like to tell you two little facts that might provide image of those two pieces of responsibility. True fact regarding the trajectory, and in honor of our airplane pilots, if you're leaving the LAX Airport and you change the direction of the nose of your aircraft six inches and leave everything else about your flight plan the same, you will land in New York City instead of Washington, DC. So making those little adjustments at the beginning make all the difference. And secondly, regarding discernment, true historical fact, an international car race was being held to showcase technological advantages and innovations. After the car race, the international newspaper headlines read, "US Car Comes In Next To Last, Russian Car Comes In Second." The whole analysis changes when you realize there were only two cars in the race, and none of the newspapers where this was published ever volunteered that information. So discernment of the sources of information and how you think about it is very critical in your job going forward. I have faith in your hard work and your intentions for MTSU. I'm sure you're going to set the right trajectory and ask the right questions. Each trustee here has taken this task on voluntarily, which makes it even more valuable to the community. You've done this out of a sense of service to the students and to the employees, and ultimately as recognition of the value of MTSU's mission to the citizens of the state of Tennessee. It's a job worth doing, even if it is very challenging. So as an employee and an alumna of MTSU, I greatly appreciate your service. I thank you for your past and future work, and it's been a real pleasure working with you for the last two years.
Not this time.
Mr. President, why don't you explain how we get the faculty trustee and introduce ours?
Trustees, you may recall that the Faculty Senate developed a process in which they select a faculty trustee. The Senate recently completed that process, and today I would like to introduce our new faculty trustee, Dr. Rick Cottle. Dr. Rick Cottle is a 25-year-plus-year textile apparel industry veteran who earned an BS degree in textile technology from Auburn University in 1984, and an MBA from the University of Phoenix in '03, and a PhD in consumer affairs from Auburn University in 2012. He spent his time in the textile apparel industry in roles like manufacturing, management, industrial engineering, cost accounting, marketing, and sales. Rick joined MTSU College of Behavioral Sciences in 2013, Behavioral Health Sciences in 2013, and he teaches a broad spectrum of topics within the textile industry. Dr. Cottle's research focuses on three-dimensional, 3D body scanning as it pertains to the fit of apparel items to the human body. Very interesting. His experience as a Board member includes Rutherford County Art Alliance, Main Street Murfreesboro, National Fashion Alliance, and National Fashion Week. On behalf of the Board, we welcome you, Professor Cottle, and look forward to working with you. Would you like to make a few comments? Let's welcome him to our...
I'll make a couple of comments. Those of you guys that know me know I might not make a couple, but I'm going to hold it down this time. I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to be. I'll tell you, big shoes to fill. Dr. Tony Johnston, first trustee for a couple of years, and then Mary's been here a couple of years. And believe me, I've been talking to Mary a bunch over the last month or so, trying to get a lay of the land and how things will work, and just the wealth of information is such big shoes to fill. I mean, I hope I can live up to that. Also, the fate that the faculty, that's a big honor to the whole faculty, sees potential that I can represent them, and I will work hard to hold up that fate, and hopefully at the end of two years, they still feel the same about me that they do today. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. President, do you have any closing remarks?
I have my report before closing remarks, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As always, I appreciate this opportunity to provide this update, report to you. I would like to share just a few updates of our recent actions and activities that our university since our last trustee meeting. As you know, on May 24th, just a day before our last committee meeting, I lifted the campus mandates and was removed, wearing of mask, maintaining social distancing, and observing mortify COVID-19 room capacities. However, masks will still be required on public transportation at universities such as Radio Express and for symptomatic patients in our student health services facility. This decision was made following CDC and state health official guidelines and after consultation with the university leadership team. Given the ready supply of vaccine available to the campus, as well as throughout the state and the nation, we believe that members of our community can make informed and individual choices about their health and safety, including appropriate actions and measures they should take to protect themselves and others from COVID-19. We are still continuing to encourage, strongly encourage, our employees and our students to take the vaccine, so that will continue. Also, currently, summer classes are underway, along with multiple new student orientation sessions that Dr. Salz and her staff are working on. And then two weeks ago, at a committee meeting, Provost Burns shared with you our latest numbers on enrollment for the fall, and we continue to monitor this regularly. Things are basically the same since the report two weeks ago. Faculty and staff are preparing to be back in their classrooms and are anxiously awaiting to welcome students for the first day of classes on August 23rd. Now, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, at the request of some of our trustees, I've asked Mr. Bruce Petcheshek, the Vice President for Information Technology and our Chief Information Officer, to give you a brief overview on our strategies regarding cybersecurity. As you know, news stories surrounding cyber threats and their negative impact have been increasing, forever increasing. This has prompted trustee Baker and trustee Delay to ask, "How safe is MTSU?" So we took their suggestion, and I've asked the Vice President to give this Board an update on our cybersecurity protection plans. Bruce?
Thank you, Dr. McPhee. It's estimated that cybercrime is going to cost the world economy $10.5 trillion by 2025. It's not going away. Hopefully, it'll get better managed, but it's going to be here. So what we're going to do today is take a look at how this cybercrime is impacting the university right now, and then we're going to take a look at our environment, the structure we put together in order to protect the university. And it's a multifaceted, multi-tiered environment with many different pieces inside it, so we'll take a real high-level look at that. And then, we're actually going to go through a scenario. Since there's a question of what would happen to us if we had a ransom attack like on the pipeline, we're actually going to go through that structure and show you what would happen here. And then, there's just some final thoughts for wrap-up after that. What's important to see here is we have quite a few attacks. This chart represents a certain time of year that we hit about 5.1 million attacks. That's not through email. Those are attacks that are port scans, attacking software, trying to get into our network systems. And it's not by accident, if you look at the chart, right around August, the end of August, it spikes way up, and then it goes back down about October. That's the beginning of our year. That's when 30,000 people are here. That's when there's a hustle and bustle of ramping up, and that's when maybe people aren't paying quite as much attention as they normally would, so they attack us. They're watching us. We're watching them back, but they're watching us. They also watch the people. So November 2019 has an example. ITD was targeted through malicious emails, and you see the purple area over there, those are backdoor attacks. So what they're doing is they've identified the IT folks here, and the attacks went up from about 200 a person in a week to well over 1,000. And they were looking for credentials to try to get in and do the mischief that you were talking about earlier, the ransomware and those kind of things. But it's not all just ransomware. Here, in January of 2020, they attacked the College of Business, and interestingly enough, it was the Finance Department. That little teal square you see is a banking attack, and they did several of those. The magenta part, the whole rest of it, are imposter attacks, and what those are used a lot for is for financial fraud, trying to do wire transfers, steal bank accounts, all those kind of things. Now, we believe they missed a little bit. They thought that the College of Business Finance Department was the Finance Department for the university, and it wasn't. The important part, though, is they're watching us. So what do we do about that? How do we protect the cyber assets of the university? So we do have an area, a department. There's a Director of Security, two full-time analysts, and one part-time analyst. They do the day-to-day work. They work with this infrastructure, they do investigations, they look at the logs, they really take care of the day-to-day business. Then for the strategical part, and for the part of evaluating how well we're doing, I do that along with the Associate Vice President of Technical Services, Chad Mullis. So we get together, we talk about that, and we review those things. And what we try to do, as we're working through here, is evaluate how well we're protected, see what our next investment has to do, but we're always trying to anticipate the unexpected. So how do we protect from the unexpected? Well, the very first thing we do is we put a perimeter around the university. Everything inside the red ring is MTSU, everything on the outside is everything else, including the bad guys. It's largely composed of firewalls and intrusion detection systems. The firewalls are many. There's not just a firewall that protects the university, there's a whole series. If you get through that first phase, that first perimeter, there are other firewalls in the university as well. So for example, the Student Health Center is pretty important because it's got HIPAA data, it requires a little bit extra care. There's firewall fence in front of that, in addition to the perimeter firewall. The Res Life, the Res Hall's network, there's firewalls there. The reason is, is we have to consider that network a hostile network, because it's where the students live, they're caring on their lives, they're doing all kinds of things we don't know about, just like you would outside the circle, so we have additional firewalls there. And then we have data centers that have firewalls in front of them. So if you get to those really important resources, like the servers that host the databases and things that would be held ransom, there are 569 servers that we protect with additional layers of firewalls. If you get past that, you're into the network, that's the blue circle. Now, you might think, if you came into the network, now you're into MTSU and you have access to all the different resources. Not quite, almost. The network is highly segmented, not everybody does that, but there are over 100 segments of the network. And if you're in one segment, unless you're the right person and have the right permissions, you can't get to those other resources, you can't get them to directly to do the mischief and do the bad things there. If you do get into the computer room, those rooms are micro-segmented, so the 569 servers are also scattered around, and if you're in one server, you can't necessarily get to the other. The point of all this is, in order to attack us, you have to really have to understand and start to understand how we're put together, because you just can't come in and get access to the resources. Then we come into this gold area. Now, this is the area that is for the end user, the end devices, there are thousands of them, thousands of computers, the computer that this session's running on, all the desktops, all the different devices. What's important there is, number one, to keep them patched, because they have vulnerabilities, and as they're discovered, the vendors send us patches. That's all done automatically, so everything's updated automatically, you can't opt out. We just take care of that. And we also have next-generation... One of the folks at the university had bought some encryption software, deciding to encrypt some soft files on their computer, separate from what we do. And we don't allow that, but they tried to load it. They loaded it on the system. This system woke up, looked at it, and said, well, it's not in the database, but it's got feathers and it quacks. So, it stopped it. And that's important, because that's the kind of software, for example, that would be used in a ransomware attack. It's encrypting files on the system. So, we had a conversation with the department, and it was cleared up, but that's the value of that piece, that gold piece. Now, when you get into the application tier, the one part I wanted to point out here is the advanced email filter. We have an advanced email filter. So, just in the past seven days, we received, the university has received, 5.1 million emails. Of that, we only delivered 543,000 of them, because all the rest of them were marked as bad. They were either from nefarious characters, had bad code, had bad attachments, bad URLs. So, look at the percentage. 5.1 million sent to us, 543,000 or so delivered. And a lot of that was even junk mail, but it wasn't dangerous. It was just junk. So, that's an important part, and we'll come to that later when we go through our example. Now, the purple is really important, and there is multi-factor authentication there and privileged account management. So, what would happen if someone would steal one of the credentials and start to try to get into the system? Well, 100% of the university, all the students and all the faculty and staff have multi-factor on their accounts. So, if a bad character starts to come in, they're going to get through those first perimeters pretty fast. They're going to get through those things, because they have a valid account. They stole a valid account. So, as they come through, though, what's going to happen is, the person who really owns that account is going to get a message on their phone, saying there's an attempted log-on. Do you want to permit it? Well, it's not their log-on, so they're going to say no. The attack stops right there. So, if that was one of those attacks, it just died. Now, it's through training and policies and procedures that wrap all of this that allows that to happen, because we continuously try to tell people, no one's going to ask you for credentials. Do not share them. After you get past the, oh, I wanted to go back just to privileged account management. That's really important. All the servers that I had talked about, the 569 servers, they have file shares from the university, the banner database, which is a system of record for finance, HR, all the student records. If you get into those systems and have the right powerful permissions, you can really do damage. So, there is no one on the campus, including all the technical staff, that their base credentials could do any of that. There's a handful of people in IT, not everybody, but a handful, that actually have to check out a special password, special permissions, to do that activity at that one time. That password they check out is a one-use password. It gets burned. So, if anybody did find out what it was, it doesn't do any good as they go forward. Not only that, you have to be here in order to check out that password. You can't be somewhere else. You can't be off-campus. You have to be in that blue ring. And one step farther than that, you have to be in a special place on that blue ring, because not every place in the university, not every piece of equipment is allowed to do that. You have to be in a special place. So, again, the hacker would have to have extreme awareness of how we're put together in order to start to do that hack. Then, the last piece that came up was the data layer, and the one thing I want to mention about that is the multi-level encryption. So, all the laptops we support, for example, are all encrypted. The reason we do that is, we don't want to worry what data's on the laptop. So, if you lose your laptop, the only thing the university lost was a PC, a bunch of plastic, a few circuit boards, and a battery. The data, we don't care about, because no one can use it, and we don't even have to declare that it was lost. So, this environment is our unified threat management environment. So, let's go through the example. Let's look at the example that we're going to get attacked like the pipeline. The most common way that's done is, they're going to send emails out and fish for credentials. They're going to try to fool somebody into giving up their credentials. They're going to know that probably the best bet is an IT person for this, because they're going to need the most powerful credentials they can get, and they're going to assume that's where they're at. So, they're going to send those emails in, they're probably going to pick the entire IT staff if they can, and try to get those credentials. What's going to happen probably is, that green layer is going to kick in, and it's going to filter it out, and we're probably never going to see it. But for the sake of discussion, we're going to say yes on a lot of these things, so you can see what happens at the end. So, okay, let's say it came in. We all have it in our mailbox. Now, the right person, I told you, it's only a handful of IT people that have that kind of permission. If I got it, it wouldn't do any good if I gave it to them. It's not going to do anything. I can't do that kind of work. So, if the one person that has that kind of permissions, that kind of ability, says yes, and fills out the thing and sends their credentials, they would be on the launching pad now. They'd be starting. Now, that's not going to happen, because especially the tech staff are highly trained that we do not do that, that never, never, never share your credentials. But for this example, we just said they did. So, now, in order to be useful, that character has to log into the system with us. So, they're going to try to log in. They're going to fly through those top layers, because they have valid credentials. But they're going to get stopped by the purple. Multi-factor is going to kick in, and that person that gave up their credentials is going to be asked. Someone's trying to log in with their credentials. Do you want to let them in? They're going to say no. They're trained to say, this person knows they're not logging in, so they're going to say no. Let's say they say yes. They click. Then, what's going to happen is, that person's in, but they really can't do anything. They have to get that privileged account in order to really sabotage the system. And not only do they have to have the privileged account, but they have to know which server in the 569, on which segment in a micro-segmented network, they have to go to in order to do the damage. So, for the sake of discussion, we're going to say they figured it out. I don't know how. We're going to say they figured it out. And they got a privileged account. Now, remember, I said you have to be here to get the privileged account. So, that's really not going to happen, but I'm using it just for the example, because if they were in Russia or in Murfreesboro, they're not going to get in. They have to be in a special place in the network. But they get in, and multi-factor kicked in, and by the way, asked that person that just lost their job, can I get in? And they said, yes, again. So, now, they're in, and they encrypted everything. So, now, our database is encrypted, and we get a ransom note, saying, you owe us $5 million. Your data's encrypted. A couple of things. Remember, I said we had already encrypted it, so there's an extortion piece of this too, because what they do is, they say, if you don't pay, we're going to share your information with the internet. We don't care about that, because it's all encrypted. It's useless to them. Then, they're going to say, pay us. We're going to ignore them. We're going to wipe out that database, and we're going to use one of several copies of backups that we have, local and remote. We have some backups that aren't even in the state. We're going to get that, and we're going to restore that database completely, and then recover. But you see, there was four or five, six stop points on the way in there, and they're really not going to get through those. So, we feel pretty protected on this. Bad things happen, but we feel pretty good about it. So, ransomware in the state of Tennessee, even when it really wasn't a super-hot item, we had one of our vendors that do business with us, we hosted their server for them. Now, what we did is, we supplied the environment, and we supplied backups, but we didn't do anything with the software or the system. That was their responsibility. They were a vendor that does business with us, and they were kind of sloppy with the patch management. So, they got attacked. They were scanned. Somebody saw the weakness, attacked them, encrypted them. They were out of business. We worked with them, and we did an analysis to make sure that none of our students' personal information was available for the hackers. Once we determined that, they hired a firm to do that research. Then, we worked with them, blew it away, restored, like I said, brought them back up. They were back in business before school started. Then, there were two community colleges, Columbia State and Nashville State. They got hacked. They got encrypted. They were held ransom. So, we went and sent, we sent a team up to Nashville State to help them out, and we got them back going. And then, we made the offer to Columbia State as well. Bad things happen to good people. We said, if you need help, let us know. They took us up on it. They had five sites that were down. They were down for multiple days. I think they canceled classes for at least a week, if not more, and we helped them through that. So, we do have some experience in there. Now, in closing, what I'd like to just share briefly is the breadth of the impact of the organization. We touch all aspects of the organization. I mean, everything you can think of that is traditional IT. We talked about the security infrastructure. It's the thousands of laptops and desktop computers, the servers, the software stack, all these different things that are in here that you would normally think that we would do. And then, there's some outreach to different groups. We have an area that's academic computing inside IT, and then there's another group. It's a similar, same group with some additional resources that's a direct partnership with the provost's office. And that area has outreach to the faculty. We had, in 2020, 167 workshops, and over 4,300 faculty attended those. And that was 78.4% of the 10-year track faculty actually attended at least one of those sessions. We worked directly with the faculty. So, when we had to pivot from in-class to remote instruction, we set up tools, we set up workshops, we actually worked hand-in-hand with many of the faculty in order to do that. We also made sure that the classrooms were able to, to capture the classroom experience, not just the lecture, but the whole experience. So, we equipped the classrooms so that the lecture was captured, anything the faculty member was shown on their computer was captured, the document camera, the notes on the whiteboard, all of those things. And the side benefit of that is, when we put it in, was it had to have long-term use. So, even after COVID, it's a good study aid. If you still do that, the students can go back and review the lecture, review the notes, ask more pointed questions. And in the fall of 2020 and the spring, together, we scheduled, automatically scheduled, and recorded over 95,000 sessions, just in that. Then, I just wanted to mention one more piece, people, process, and technology. We often partner with the different areas, and we focus on a lot of different areas, even if technology isn't a primary one. And the one-stop shop is an example of that. There was the goal to milk this one-stop shop, and it was a new building where all the student services were going to be collected together. So, we partnered with Student Affairs in looking at this, and we went to all the building design meetings and helped work through that. But more importantly, we worked with them on the jobs, what people did, the job descriptions, how it would work, because the idea was to turn the building more into just a building that people go to, but a different way of service. So, they have a one-stop counter, and those people handle many things across several departments. So, it really is a one-stop shop, and it does really well. Now, the thing is, the success of that building, the success of that group wholly belongs 100% to Student Affairs. They make it work. They make it happen. They put the hard work in day-to-day to make it happen. That's made possible by that partnership that we put on at the very beginning and worked with them. Similarly, the Graduate College. What we noticed was, they were having trouble turning applications into students. There was always a backlog. There was always a set of applications that weren't quite processed. So, we partnered with them, and they were really open to it. We reviewed jobs, what people did, where the bottlenecks were, where the flow was, all of that, fixed that part, and then worked on the software to make the software really smooth and transparent, so that would work. The bottleneck disappeared. Then, they partnered with Marketing Communications to now fill the funnel, because we can get the funnel out. As of today, we have the largest graduate class in the history of MTSU. That success belongs to Graduate College. They're doing the hard work. They're getting the students. They're making it happen. But the possibility of that was based on that relationship that we had with them at the beginning, where we paved the foundation for them to be successful. So, you can see, it's a pretty wide variety. It goes all the way from the security pieces, the hardware pieces, the software pieces, the initial support, the consultations, the process reviews. Many times, our work looks like this. Back to you, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. We just got Technology 101. You did a fabulous job. Any questions from the board members for Bruce?
So, Bruce, do we bring in people who do PIN testing for us?
Yes, we do. Yep. We do that regularly.
So, just a quick question, maybe a comment. You're, you know, you're only as strong as your weakest link. And, you know, the numbers are very good, the 70% plus in terms of faculty taking these particular courses. Is there a way to, and I don't know what the rules are from a faculty perspective, but it would seem to me that cybersecurity is so critical that training for, you know, just obvious things, whether they're phishing, you know, don't click on links you don't know, understanding how you can identify a potential email that comes through that's malicious, because it somehow got through your filter. Is there a way to mandate that you have to, at least once a year, take a refresher course? Because things keep changing. The bad guys keep getting smarter. They keep coming up with different ideas, and it's really important for, you know, it's such a huge community, to require as part of your employment contract to take these kinds of courses, because by just having one person make a mistake, you expose the entire university to risk and beyond. So, I don't know if that's a possibility, you know, the mandating cybertraining for faculty and staff.
Well, we do have an annual training program, and now the question becomes, can we mandate it? And we're going to have to have some discussions, but we're going to have to do it. We get state audits, along with finance, every year, and that's one of the things we're starting to look at. And they've indicated to us that if you don't have repercussions for not taking the training, that they'll write us up as a finding, and that'll be an issue. So, we do have to get to that. And how we probably get to it is to revoke privileges if you didn't take it, and then you can have the privileges back, if that's what you're going to do, is take the training. And we can monitor that and figure that out. So, you say, okay, I give up. I'll take the training. And it's pretty easy, except if you ask the provost. He thinks there's like 8 billion videos, and there's only 100,000 of them. But there's videos in the training, and the idea would be to get to that 100% mark, because you're absolutely right, and that is the biggest, the biggest safe thing. If that circle that you saw, that is blanketed in policies, procedures, and training. I mean, that's what it's blanketed in.
Your cat video is my favorite all-time commercial. I love that. And I think that's the answer to your question, Chris, is that, yeah, if you envision the users, both faculty and students, as cats, the goal is to get them all there, and I think you're right. Some generous application of collegiality and some denial of privileges is probably long-term what'll have to happen. But you're not going to be able to hit them over, and shouldn't be able to hit the faculty, the students, or the staff over the head with, you know, drastic, major incidences, just kind of herd the cats a little bit.
Yeah, I guess my only point being that you've seen how someone innocently clicking on something, whether it was the Colonial Pipeline, you know, just really, it wasn't a big error in the mind of whoever it was that clicked on that email. It was a mistake, because they probably weren't sensitized enough. So, I think somehow getting to 100%, because you've got 70, I forget what the number was, 74%?
That was, that was the folks that took, that kind of training that they took, those were workshops on how to improve your course, on how to introduce technology into.
I see. But I think, you know, it's having those sorts of training, training courses, or, again, mandating some, you have to take this, because really, you're not just going to hurt yourself. You're going to hurt the community. You're going to hurt the university and create havoc, whether it's a community college that gets shut down for five days, or MTSU that gets shut down for longer than that. So, just, just a comment.
And you're right. And if you look, that's why that was defense-in-depth. There is multiple rings of support, each supported by many. I didn't even touch on all the different pieces that are in all of those, just highlighted some of them. But the whole idea is, we expect failure, and we expect, we anticipate someone's going to do the wrong thing. So, it's built into there. If you notice the example I gave, we had a highly-trained technical person that we used as an example, and they made three or four mistakes, and still, we came out of it. So, we are building that in. We do anticipate that, because the human piece of this is the weakest link. That's where it's going to fall apart.
And I would add that those multiple circles, that's a really good illustration of how to think about, not everybody has access to the most dangerous data. So, I would bet you that the people that could do the equivalent of letting the Colonial Pipeline thing happen are 100% trained.
Oh, they very much so. And it's, there are separation of duties there, too. There was multiple rings of support, each supported by many, I didn't even touch on all the different pieces that are in all of those, just highlighted some of them. But the whole idea is, we expect failure, and we expect, we anticipate someone's going to do the wrong thing. So, it's built into there.